I'm a big fan of that. Just.
Good morning, everybody, and welcome to the Finance and Physical Resources Committee. Today's date is Tuesday, October 6, 2015. The time is 8:30 a.m. In the past hour, we have been conducting a work session on our 2016 budget. We'll continue to have several work sessions on that before we make a recommendation out of this committee to the Board in November, correct? And we'll have a open process where there will be an open hearing, and there can be public comment as well. Speaking of which, we will move to our agenda item number two, which is public comment for today's meeting. Is there any public comment? I see none, so we will move to agenda item number three, which is the consent agenda. Is there a motion to adopt the consent agenda? Commissioner Vander Mullen.
Second.
And supported by Commissioner Jones. Is there any questions or comments? I see none, so all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. We move then to agenda item number four, which is an action request by the Administrator's Office.
This is a request to recommend to the Board to authorize a partnership agreement with the Michigan Economic Development Corporation to apply for funds from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development for the National Disaster Resilience Competition and to authorize the county administrator to submit a letter of funding commitment contingent upon federal award to be included with the MEDC application for the CDBG funds. Congress appropriated $1 billion nationally for resilience-related activities in a two-phase competition following Superstorm Sandy. The county was identified as an eligible area. Forty eligible applicants advanced through the Phase One National Disaster Resilience Competition. Each of the eligible applicants can request up to $500 million for projects that address unmet needs from past disasters while addressing vulnerabilities that could put residents in harm's way for future disasters. Communities at the center of the West Michigan region, led by the county, the city of Grand Rapids, and downtown Grand Rapids, Inc., have collaboratively designed the grant strategy, which is an innovative blueprint for action that transforms the river from a liability into an asset, strengthens the region's resilience, and ultimately delivers far-reaching economic, ecological, and social benefits. Ultimately, the strategy focuses on three values: protecting critical infrastructure, restoring and repurposing land and water assets, and establishing an equitable and inclusive river corridor. Final submissions are due October 27th, with the final selection and awards expected to be announced in January of 2016. Upon receipt of a federal award, project activities and appropriation of funds will be brought to the Boards of Commissioners for approval. The agreement has been reviewed and approved as deformed by Assistant Corporate Counsel.
So moved. Thank you. We have a -- I'm sorry. Commissioner Mass made the motion. Commissioner Bukowski made the support. And we have a question by Commissioner Mass.
Well, it doesn't talk about exact dollar amounts, and it says, "When we decide to appropriate necessary funds, they will be brought to us." Do we have some idea of what we're talking about? Is it 500 million? We can go up to 500 million?
Well, that's the grant that amount we are eligible to apply for.
Yes, right. Are we going for that?
Up to 200 million is what we're looking at.
200, okay.
And Commissioner Borges?
Thank you. Thank you. Good morning, Wayne.
Good morning.
Thank you, Chair. There's been national concern over the federal government's usurping authority over waterways and that. Have we looked at that? Are we giving up any controls in what we do in this matter? We better look at that, huh?
No, it's not affected by that.
We will not be giving up any controls. In fact, this is being worked on jointly with a number of partners, including the city of Grand Rapids and the city of Wyoming, Ada, so...
Okay. That's just my concern. Thank you.
Commissioner Vander Mullen?
Good. Wayne, could you delineate half a dozen of the projects that would be on that list, potentially?
Yeah. The main projects have to do with mostly downtown Grand Rapids with the floodwalls. And so, we're going to try to remediate the flooding that occurred back in 2013. There's some drains throughout the county that we're going to try to shore up. And then, there's some lift stations that we're going to try to improve, especially at Ada. There's this location where last year, I mean, 2013, there was only one inch before it really hit the lift station, and that would've flooded all of the residents down by the Thorn Apple River, Ada Township. So, that location, Plainfield, there's some houses that need to be taken out of the floodplain, so that area is being impacted. And out in Granville in Wyoming, we're also looking at those areas for impacts. So, there's mostly, most of the work is going to be done in core Grand Rapids area because of the -- and there's also Millennium Park, the Parks Department. There are some projects that will tie those in as well.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Mass?
Well, I guess I was just gonna follow up. I don't think we've got -- is there any one sort of executive summary of what the grant strategy is that we could each have a copy of?
We can get you that, yes. It's being currently modified and work done because we're working with the Michigan Economic Development Court Corporation, which is the grantor or the grantee of this grant.
Okay.
So, we have to work through all of the language with them in concert. So, we're still working through that. But we can get you what we have today that we put together. That may change.
But it's getting pretty close. I mean, you gotta submit it by April 27th, so...
But we can get you that.
Do you -- do we want the preliminary, or do you want to wait until they have the final --
Well, no, I guess, I mean, I think, I'm excited enough about what's going on.
We should have that wrapped up by the end of this week.
But as we begin to hear about it in the community, it's nice to be able to talk with a little bit of intelligence about what it is, so...
That's why I'd like to see the finals.
Yeah, the current draft that we received from MEDC just is not at the level that we want to use, and so, we're working with them to rework that quite a bit. So, but we can get you what we've actually submitted to them. We can get you that.
Well, I guess, as Commissioner Softill says, when it's all finished and what's been actually submitted, then is what I'd like to get.
Yeah, just so that we don't misstate anything.
Yeah, yeah. Now, does the city and who has to approve? Who has to sign off on it? I mean, we're signing off on it. Are we gonna be the fiduciary?
The city of Grand Rapids, the county, and the state of Michigan.
Okay. Who controls the money?
The state of Michigan.
State of Michigan, okay. So, we have to live with that, okay.
All right. Commissioner Jones?
Thank you, Chair. Just to confirm, there's no matching funds required?
Oh, there are.
There are matching funds. How much from the county is expected?
Well, we want to provide a two-to-one match, so 50% of what we're going to apply for, we're identifying those dollars between the county, the city, and the state. So, $100 million. If it's 200 million, we're gonna identify that amount.
Right.
And part of that is leveraged dollars. It's not exact match, so there are projects that are already in the works, that we've already done. So, in the last, how many months are we gonna go back?
Since '10 to '14.
So, we are allowed to pull projects into this as leveraged dollars, matched dollars, from 2014, '10 to '14. It's not new dollars that we're adding in all of this. Some of them are new dollars, based on projects that the state is working with us on, and projects that we know that the city's got on the books, and what the county has on the books to do in the next year. So, we're taking all of those projects combined to come up with the match.
How much new money is needed?
The new money that's needed is a moving target right now, based on what we're able to identify with our matching partners. So, this is the reason we're in the action request. There's a motion about we'll be coming back for specific projects. To the county administrator, we're gonna give them, ask him to sign a letter with numbers later, but then, we'll be coming back to you with specific projects. The only area that's really unknown at this point is related to the Parks Department, and it'd be based on how many acres of land we might be able to purchase. So, that's why we're in this motion, and we've just been working with the state on Buck Creek area that was just resolved on Friday. So, it's a really tricky thing, because we're taking about 10 local units of government and having to merge all their matched dollars, figure them out. As we do this, we're making a bike while we're riding it, basically.
And these projects all have to fit in a way so that we have the best chance of receiving the award. So, we're still working with the state of Michigan to identify which projects are actually going to be the best fit, and then determining what leverage dollars we can receive from the state in addition to the dollars that we have locally that we can put into the mix.
So, let's...
All of this is being worked through. Currently, there are two individuals that are in Washington, D.C., working with HUD and with the folks from MEDC, meeting with legislators in Washington, D.C. to try to identify what support we can gain from the state of Michigan as well. So, we're hoping that we can put more dollars on the table for the state.
So, let's take it one more step. Do we foresee that any, right now, that any of these new monies that would be needed would result in a change to our budget that we're working through right now for 2016?
No.
Okay.
Or subsequent budgets?
Or subsequent budgets.
No.
No.
I mean, very careful to make sure that we're not obligating ourselves in the future, as well as currently undermining our current budget.
Okay. Just, Commissioner Bukowski?
Oh, I just wanted to say, as a suggestion, the thing to send out, unless it's totally out of date, last Tuesday, I was part of a meeting where this was presented by a DGRI staff person, and it's a two-page overview, and it has that. It shows how it fits together, some of the questions that we asked about, and a higher level, without getting the details of it, but showing that it is, it's from border to border, in the county, in the grand, whatever we, basin, valley, whatever, but it is comprehensive and gathers all the jurisdictions, and small pieces that add to it, and big pieces that also, so it's a pretty cool project.
But, okay, Commissioner Mass? Thank you, but the "no funding is required" statement that you have down, I mean, I immediately looked at that, too.
That's on the side.
So, we're not obligating ourselves, either at this point or at a future point, for tapping into our existing budget funds, our existing millage funds, or whatever.
That's the plan, but we also, we wanna see what it may be, I'll just use this as an example, and it's only an example. We may get money for the perks building.
We may get through this here, from this here, because it's in the watershed, yeah.
If there's some leverage here.
Yes.
You know, the Parks building is on our radar screen as something that we want.
For replacement, yes.
So, that's just an example.
So, then, we would have to come up with a match.
But it would have to be an appropriation by the Board of Commissioners.
Yeah, so, but we would be approving that at a future time, whether or not we want to do it.
Correct, correct.
So, we're not obligating ourselves for any part of that 100, you're saying, it's a dollar, I mean, a 50-50, basically, so 200 million has to come up with 100 million of match and 100 million from this HUD grant.
Commissioner Mass, I think your questions are good, but this is the minutia of this grant opportunity.
Yeah.
Is that we have to have something called sources of dollars that we're gonna commit as a region.
Right.
But to where they come from is a moving target. So, this is the opportunity with the state of Michigan, could backfill dollars from the trust fund that we might be submitting for in future years. The capital improvement project fund that the county has at the Parks Department often requests funding for, that might be able to be some of the money that comes through on this. And so, the dollars that we commit are gonna be conservative, they're gonna be reasonable, and we're then gonna come back to you when the projects actually come forth out of our Community Development Department, and we'll be showing you the nuts and bolts of all the matching and whatnot. So, this is a moving target. We have an infographic that Commissioner Bukowski has seen at a different meeting. We can definitely show to everybody how this all fits together. This ultimately is a grant strategy. The amount of water that the Grand River carries from the time it enters the county in Lowell, to the time it exits in Granville, it grows 2.8 times. So, all the development that we're doing, we have to manage more and more water all the time, so this is a great opportunity for us to work with our local units to figure this out.
Well, I'm in favor, I mean, I can understand the grant, the grant strategy, yeah, just that, I mean, just...
So, just to be clear, if this is approved, which would be a great thing, you know, there'll be something that comes back before us and yet to vote on. So, any other questions by the commissioners? I think this is a great opportunity, you know, great in identifying it and acting on it, because it certainly seems pertinent and relevant to our communities. Good. So, with that, let's take, we have a motion on the table. Let's take our vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. We move then to agenda item number five, which is an action request by Facilities Management.
This is a request to recommend to the Board to approve an independent contractor agreement with Spectrum Health for the operation and maintenance of the powerhouse at the Fuller Complex. The powerhouse, which was constructed in 1925, located on the Fuller Complex, originally served multiple facilities at this complex with steam and chilled water. All the facilities are now served by individual HVAC systems, and the powerhouse serves only the hospital facility. Since 1999, Spectrum Health has leased the main hospital facility at the county's Fuller Complex. Facilities management has been responsible for powerhouse operations. Spectrum Health has requested to operate the powerhouse with their own staff to achieve cost efficiencies. Facilities management concurs with this request. The proposed agreement allows Spectrum Health to operate the powerhouse and maintain all equipment to generally accepted industry standards. If approved by the Board, it is anticipated that the agreement will take, will allow Spectrum to take over operations in November. The agreement has been reviewed and approved as deformed by Assistant Corporate Counsel.
So moved. Okay, we have a motion to approve by Commissioner Borges, and we have support by Commissioner Vander Mullen. Are there questions or comments? Commissioner Bukowski?
I note that it states that there's no new dollars required, of course, since they're taking it over, but what's the net impact on this? I mean, is there a halftime person that, or halftime of a person's job that's no longer needed for this, or what? There's really no change, or what's the true net of this?
Good morning, Al.
Good, good morning, Commissioners. I and one of our maintenance facility operations supervisors spend some time there, but essentially, we contract out the vast majority of the work there, so the impact will be minimal on our department. Because, again, we're obligated to operate for them under an agreement. We operate it through a third-party contractor. Now, what Spectra wants to do is operate, probably continue for quite a while with a third-party contractor at a reduced amount, and bring in their own boiler operators and such, and gear up and kind of phase out the third contractor to some degree. Yet to be determined how much. But it just gives them flexibility to operate a power plant that serves solely them.
Right.
Impact to us is minimal.
Okay.
Commissioner Vander Mullen?
What's the length of the lease that Spectrum has on those two pieces? How far out of...
I'm sorry, I'd have to revisit that lease, but it's many years out.
It's a long-term?
Very, very long term.
And...
And they just re-upped about four years ago.
Okay. So, I guess my concern would be that they do maintain it properly, because it's still, we still own it.
As part of our discussions, and we have an extremely good working relationship with Spectrum, the county does, we always have had since they came in there, and during our discussions of potentially doing this, because this has been in the works for a while, to say, "Well, maybe we want to, maybe we don't," and so on and so forth. But I've had an opportunity to work closely with them. I've toured extensively up on the hill, their facilities, and specifically their boiler operations, and over at Blodge, and they do an outstanding job of maintaining their equipment and facilities, but also, there's every reason for them to take care of this, because it is serving hundreds of their patients in the hospital that they're responsible for. So, they have a tremendous interest in making sure that things are very, very, very well taken care of.
Okay, any other questions? Commissioner Mass?
I mean, just to follow up Commissioner Bukowski's, it will result in some reduced costs, because we, right now, have the contract with that maintenance person, but...
For every dollar we spend on that contract, they reimburse us.
And now, they're going to take it over?
It's a pass-through.
Okay, so, it's just a pass-through?
Yes.
Okay. But we don't have the Exhibit A onto this document here, but that lists all their services that they're gonna provide, so hopefully, they maintain it well.
Again, there's virtually every reason for them to maintain it well.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Or every incentive, rather.
Any other questions? Very good, thank you, Al. All in favor indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. We move to another action request, item number six, an action request by Facilities Management.
This is a request to recommend to the Board to adopt the facilities use policy as revised. Facilities management has reviewed the county's facilities use policy and is recommending changes to address certain changes to county facilities, and to streamline and to clarify the approval process. A copy of the policy showing the proposed changes is attached to the action request.
Okay, do we have a motion to approve? Commissioner Mass, do we have support? Vice Chair Hennessy, do we have questions or comments? I'm seeing none, so all in favor indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. We move then to agenda item number seven, which is an action request by the Parks Department.
This is a request to recommend to the Board to appropriate an additional $160,000 from estimated revenues to the Parks Department's 2015 general fund budget. In recent years, Parks Department revenues have climbed steadily, with 2015 revenues currently projected to end 46% higher than 2010. Over the past five years, the department has budgeted for total revenue increases averaging 5.6% annually, with actual earnings growth at about 7.9%. Since weather can severely impact park use from one year to the next, the department must be careful to take weather conditions into its projections. The 2015 budget of $4.6 million included $2.7 million in general fund support and $1.00, almost $2 million in revenues. Actual revenues are expected to come in approximately $250,000 higher than budget. With several of the over-budget revenues occurring in areas that are labor or commodity intensive, the department requires an additional $80,000 appropriation to cover the additional staffing and supplies associated with this increased activity. An additional $80,000 will be used for various repair and maintenance projects throughout the system.
Is there a motion to approve? Commissioner Bukowski, is there support?
Support.
Commissioner Vander Mullen, are there questions or comments?
Questions.
Commissioner Borges?
Thank you, Chair. So, anticipated increase in revenues is a quarter million, and we're suggesting an increase in their appropriation of 160.
Correct.
The other 90, would that offset our next resolution that's coming before us on the increase of costs?
No, the other 90 will be part of the lapse we talked about earlier.
Okay, but if we, if we have over, what kind of dollars is the next resolution on increases? What kind of dollars is that going to...
About 17,000. But this is this year's budget. The other one is for next year's budget.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Bukowski?
I had a similar question about where that other 90 went, and then, the second point, though, is very happy to see the additional 80,000 for repair and maintenance that, since we're able to afford it, since that's one area of focus of mine, is just any kind of preventive maintenance we can do when we have the opportunity, saving bucks. So, good to see.
Very good. Vice Chair Hennessy?
I wanted to ask about, you know, the other portion, the other 90 will go to the layoffs. How much is expected to lapse from the Parks Department at the end of this year? How much will they lose? Will they be, because we just, we only allow them to go up to 100,000 and keep, right? Departments are allowed to keep?
No. Anything, anything that General Fund Department laps.
Right.
Reverts to the general fund.
Reverts to the general fund. So, their monies will all, the extra will all revert to the general fund, rather than to be allowed to be used within the Parks Department for even more projects and more maintenance.
That's the recommendation.
I don't like that.
That's my recommendation.
So, I'm not sure how to vote.
Sure prerogative.
Other questions, comments? I'm seeing none, so we'll call the question. All in favor indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We then move to agenda item number eight, which is an action request also by the Parks Department.
This is a request to recommend to the Board to approve changes to the Parks Department fees for campsites, cabins, and boat rentals effective November 1, 2015. County policy requires that departments annually review their fees. The Parks Department is recommending a number of changes to its fee schedule as outlined on the action request. The, and it also shows how long ago the last change was. The proposed fee increases for campsites, cabins, and the cottage at Wabasas Campground are adjustments to mere increasing market rates. The new rates would keep Wabasas at approximately the median of comparable campgrounds based on 2015 rates. Boat rentals at Millennium Park are in high demand, and there's often a waitlist to rent kayaks and stand-up paddle boats. Rental fees are low compared to the market. The proposed increase is not expected to reduce demand. Once fully implemented, these increases are projected to generate an additional $5,000 from campground rentals and $12,000 from boat rentals.
Okay, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Commissioner Mass, is there support? Did I hear you? Commissioner Vander Mullen? Okay. Questions and comments? Vice Chair Hennessy?
I'm opposing this. So many of the, most of these that are being changed were just changed a year ago, and I don't want to get into this every year, charging our own residents more money and more money, and it's going to start to get above the median, and I really, you know, it's been more like every two, three, five years that we adjust these, and I'm really not liking this going for an annual basis. I'm voting no.
Commissioner Borges?
Thank you, Chair. Maybe Roger could answer this better for us. Roger, if we're having such a waiting list for the rental of kayaks and paddleboards, is there opportunity with this to purchase more of them? Can you handle more of them there, or...
We've been purchasing more paddleboards over the last three years, so we've added one or two or three or four, so, and there's still a wait time for them. So, we'll still be the cheapest paddleboards that I'm aware of around here. Other hourly rates are like $25, which we think is a little excessive.
So, you have done a little benchmarking on what other prices are?
Yeah, and on the campsites, which were the ones that were changed a year ago, we do a survey of other campgrounds in the area, and we want to make sure that we stay at market, so as they go up, we go up, so that we don't undercut them.
That's one of my things, whether, I do want us to stay within market, you know, I don't want us to undersell the market, and that's, I... That's, I appreciate that. It's not fair to the brick and mortar folks. Yeah, I'll be supporting it, thank you.
Commissioner Bukowski?
Yeah, and between the two comments, at the campground, what is the vacancy rate? In what, what's the vacancy rate at the campground?
We, we, we look up here, but I'm not going to be able to give you a number anyway. We look at it based on the type of site, so we look at our full hookup separately from our partial hookup separately from our primitive sites. And we tend to look between Memorial Day and Labor Day and having told you that, I can't tell you off the top of my head, I'd be making up a number, but it's, it's, I want to say it's in the neighborhood of 40%, but I don't know for sure.
So, Tuesday, Wednesday, we may, is a higher vacancy than Friday, Saturday, Sunday, obviously. I mean, those are our busy days and...
You mean the weekends?
Yes.
Yeah, so, I mean, again, I camp enough in state parks and the national lakes shore to understand how it works. I guess my, my main concern about the market is if we gave them away for free, how much of an impact would we have in the sense of if they're already full, we wouldn't take business from somebody else because we don't have any more sites to sell. So, again, the market...
Well, we would be shy of 100%.
At least midweek?
Yes.
Again, when you do averages, but trying to get there Friday morning to get a site.
Performance measurements are next week here, so I'll have those numbers for you then.
Okay, well, maybe I'll come sit in the back. But yeah, so I mean, I definitely get the need, we don't want to unfairly compete and a 3% thereabouts in many of these is not outrageous.
Commissioner Jones?
Thank you, Chair. Is it uncommon for the cottage and the cabins to have a different rate, you know, with that Sunday, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, with then a different rate for the weekend?
The cottage and the cabins are generally, well, the cottage is a full week rate.
Okay, but the cabins are the per night?
Per night.
I'm just wondering what others do. I mean, are other sites with cabins, do they have different rates for different days of the week?
I think they're, yeah, it depends on the facility. We have not at the campground charged different rates based on the day of the week. We do do that with our picnic shelters, you know, weekdays are cheaper than weekends. But at our campground, we've always just done this, and I'm not saying it, we've always done it that way, but I'm just telling you the history that it's always been the same rate for weekdays and weekends. We've talked on and off about doing that a little bit differently, but we so far have not, have not made an effort to change the rates. So, it's right now, no matter what day of the week you are, it's the same day. With the cabin, I think it's a minimum rental of two days and the cabins, the capacity on the cabins, if I can make up another number, I think, I think we're probably booked closer to 80 or 90% capacity on the cabins and we're about 97% on the cottage. So, the cabins, even though we do a minimum of two nights, they do, they're very well solid booked. And I think typically the people in the cabins are staying for a full week anyway.
Okay, thank you.
In terms of rates, where we are, are comparables for cabins. We've looked at, got about 10 different campgrounds here that have cabins. The low rate is 45 and the high is 125, so at 75, again, we're about in the median there.
Okay, other questions? I just was going to comment, I do appreciate Vice Chair Hennessy, your comments, point well taken. I do personally believe, and I think the benchmarking is really critical here, I don't think we should be leading the market, but I also don't think we should be significantly lagging behind the market either. And in my mind, that's, that's really what this assessment boils down to, so I appreciate the fact that this has been benchmarked against, I guess, competitors, if you will. And just for the record, that was the Director of Parks, Roger Sabine, and our Business Manager, Bob Papp. Thank you for answering those questions. We'll call the question. All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Motion passes. We now move to Agenda Item Number Nine, which is miscellaneous. Is there any Commissioner miscellaneous today? Okay, I just was going to have a quick shout-out to Commissioner Jones and Vice Chair Hennessy, who did a very, a lot of work and a very nice event for the Parks Foundation here just a week ago tonight. And speaking of parks, you know, that helps a lot from the county standpoint too when we have a healthy Parks Foundation, so thank you for your good work on that. So, with that, we will be adjourned at 9:05 AM.